I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, February 7th, if we can stand to begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, we will begin with the superintendent and student member of the board update.
Just give me two minutes.
Hopefully.
Yeah, sorry, something, I, I, so first of all, I haven't broken anything, I just didn't load it. Did I share it with you right?
Yeah.
Well, in the meantime, perhaps we could just jump right over to the student members of the board.
Oh yeah, we'll shake it up.
Ms. Kibler, how's it been going? What's been going on?
Um, not a lot, actually.
We were just together a few days ago, so.
Yes, yes, um, so, well, good morning, just to start, um, yeah, it's kind of an interim between school visits right now, um, so the next things on my agenda are SMASK, which will be taking place tomorrow, that's St. Mary's Association of Student Councils, and the exciting thing about this SMASK General Assembly taking tomorrow is that we'll be electing the next SMAB, so it's a big deal.
Yeah.
It seems really early, but, you know, you gotta prepare, so that'll be super, super exciting, and then right after SMASK tomorrow, I'll be joining Mrs. Bachner and Mrs. Gill for the Blueprint Town Hall on College and Career Readiness, um, so I'm looking forward to that as well, be answering some questions on what it's like to be a high school student looking for college and, and beyond, so, yeah, that's pretty much all for me now, I can keep stalling if you'd like.
No, that's, 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 that's pretty good, she actually referenced one of our slides, specifically about the town hall that we're holding, um, tomorrow night, um, another one of the slides is, uh, the BECA Scholarship, um, Information Night is tonight, correct, Dr. Marr?
Uh, it is tonight at four thirty.
Seeing nods from, yes.
It is tonight at four thirty at the University System of Maryland at Southern Maryland.
Yeah, so USMSM, so, we, we plugged it last week as well in the superintendent's update, um, but this is just a reminder that right now it's happening today, so, um, if you haven't made plans for four thirty today, you need to modify those plans to be able to go there and hear about all the ways in which our community supports our young people as they move forward into the next phase of their life.
Okay.
And so, look at that awesome slide that has all that great information about it, where you really can learn about the, 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 all the different opportunities, and most importantly, it's a common scholarship, so you don't have to apply to forty-five different things, you fill out one common app and it gets distributed to all for consideration, so, please make sure that you're part of that, I'm sure that, uh, if we were to hear from our high school counselors, we'd be hearing very similar things to say, yes, please do, please do. So tomorrow night is indeed our third town hall on the blueprint, and we are really getting near and dear to everyone's hearts, especially as we are at this point in time where we are thinking about and planning for what comes next in our lives, whether it be, uh, what's happened in eighth grade, in tenth grade, in twelfth grade, or the wider world that is available after you walk across the stage in June, so, that's gonna be tonight, a lot of, or tomorrow night, uh, at the James Day Forest Career and Technology Center begins at six PM, please, we encourage you, if you can, be there in person, so that you might ask interactive questions of our assembled panel of subject matter experts, but, in the event that you are not able, you can stream it in real time, uh, live from our webpage, or, after the fact, you can visit our YouTube channel and you can watch it, watch it there, but being there in person gives you the greatest access to have people answer any questions you might have, and then, the final pillar, pillar two, teachers and leaders, will be March 2nd, and by then, we really will be in the full swing of all things relative to, um, our, uh, educational leaders and what that looks like, so, that'll be a really, really, really good night. Uh, I did, in just a couple of days, I did get to go out to Lexington Park with, uh, Dr. Becky Skow, the principal of Lexington Park, and I got to, uh, enjoy lunch, I did not eat lunch, alright, they ate lunch, the fifth, the fifth grade, uh, house team leadership conclave representing each one of the houses, they, they were eating walking tacos, so that's where you take the Dorito bag and you open it up and you put taco meat and cheese and, oh, it was so, but I was good, 'cause I only eat salads during the day, so that's neither here nor there. And what a great, what a great group of kids, and they were really talking about, um, how they are embracing the house team concept, how it kind of defines a lot of their interactions, and how they get to celebrate each other and the school through that, through that organization, it was really, really neat, what a great group of kids. I was at Leonardtown Elementary School yesterday, and that's Ms. Higgs kindergarten class, unfortunately, Mrs. Higgs wasn't there, but, um, the, the, the parent educator who supports her was, was there, and what a great group of kids, we got to read a couple of books, and, um, that was a lot of fun. On Friday, so, the Friday before, I got a, I got a phone call from, uh, Ms. Jenna Guzman, who is the, um, the Public Information Officer for the, for the Commissioners of St. Mary's, St. Mary's County, and the governor was bringing his entire cabinet down to St. Mary's County, and so, when they got down to St. Mary's County on Friday, they all divvied up and went different places, the governor, who I had hoped was gonna be at the, at the James Day Forest Career and Technology Center, because that is the place to be, but, regardless, he decided, he made the decision to go on base and was there for a very long time, I believe that, completely, I mean, once you see all of the incredibly engaging essential work that's going on, on the other side of the fence, as well as then how it is being carried forth on the other side of the fence, it is, it is truly fascinating, um, they also, the, the, uh, deputy, no, not the-
Lieutenant Governor.
Lieutenant Governor, Lieutenant Governor, that's it, went to Leonardtown proper and got a tour of all the wonderful things that are happening in Leonardtown, but, we got multiple members of the cabinet to come and walk through the tech center, so, um, Secretary Montero, Secretary Sheraldi, Secretary, Executive Director Lenning, um, the, uh, the Colonel Butler, he had called himself the superintendent as well, he referred himself to the superintendent
of the state police, yes.
Same, um, of the Maryland State Police, and then, Secretary Strickland, so, we had, um, we had a lot of very influential people who make a lot of the important decisions that drive the economy and population forward in, uh, the state of Maryland, they went through the tech center, and I'd just like to say, first of all, the tech center had just a handful of days to make sure that they were ready and organized to greet these very important people, um, so, to Principal Egan and the fantastic team that he works with at the Forest Center, thank you very much, um, specifically Bonnie Kelly, who is the Vocational Support Services Internship Liaison, but she is also the greatest get-it-done person ever, she is, she's just fantastic, she made sure that it was all organized and coordinated, and we had a clear path through the building, so that they could see all of the programming that's available to students in St. Mary's County, but truly, a highlight was that Leonardtown High School senior, Lilia Burks, who is the Skills USA National, National School Secretary, um, an intern at Naval Systems Inc., um, just a fantastic young lady, full of promise, um, she actually started by giving them an overview, talking to them about what goes on at the tech center, talking to them about Skills USA, talking to them about the fantastic programming and the apprenticeship model, internship model that's available to our students, uh, she was incredibly, um, she's just so, so very knowledgeable, and, uh, accomplished, and then, on top of that, poised, um, it was, it was really wonderful, they could not say enough about the school, the staff, and the students.
And they continued saying so much about it later at the University of Maryland, Southern Maryland campus.
Right, so all those who didn't go to the Forest Center, I'm sure that they were fairly jealous.
Yes.
As they should have been, because they missed out.
Our tour kind of blew away what, the tour that they did at the, at the smart building, just saying.
Well, I'm, you know, FOMO is a very real thing. Okay. Uh-oh, oh, so, February, here we are, second week of February, moving through, um, we have new teacher seminar tonight, that's super exciting, we have the BECA Scholarship Information Night at USMSM tomorrow, we have the town hall Friday, we have a two-hour early dismissal, then we have a straight week of regular going to school every single day, we have a three-day, uh, weekend because we are off for President's Day, no school for students, that's also a snow makeup day. But I don't think we're gonna need to make up any snow days this year, unfortunately, cold, sure, snow, no, ugh, alright, um, and then, of course, we've already heard from our fantastic student member of the board, connected, accountable, resilient, excited to learn, that's what we're all about, and, uh, so ends my report for today, thank you very much.
Do you have anything more, you covered yours at the beginning?
That's all, covered it, yeah.
Okay, alright, then we will move right on to our first recognition, our only recognition, School Counseling Week, I think Ms. Hunt is somewhere, there you go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to express appreciation for our school counselors, St. Mary's County Public Schools joins with the American School Counselor Association in recognition, school counselors, school counselors are actively engaged in helping students examine their abilities, their strengths, interests, and talents, this year, we are highlighting these three school counselors, standing before you for their unique efforts to promote the emotional, academic, and career development needs of students. Allison Sayers, school counselor at the Chesapeake Public Charter School, worked with community mental health experts to facilitate virtual seminars called Community Tool Talks. Seminar topics were generated from a parent-teacher survey wherein participants were asked to identify student mental health issues that they would like to learn more about. Community Tool Talks addressed a wide range of topics, including, but not limited to, confidence and self-esteem, mental health, signs and symptoms for parents and caregivers, relationship building, helping children manage anger, helping children manage grief, and anxiety, worries, and coping tools. Community Tool Talk videos are recorded, so that they may be watched at a future date by those community members that could not participate in a specific seminar. Community Tool Talks is an excellent example of educators, the mental health community, and parents working together to meet the mental health needs of children. Stephanie Hall, School Counselor at Mechanicsville Elementary School, facilitates student-focused approach to career development when she works with fifth graders to sponsor the Mechanicsville Elementary School Children's Business Fair. The purpose of the fair is to provide students with the opportunity to learn about entrepreneurship. Prior to the fair, students spend weeks learning how to develop a business plan, which includes planning for startup cost, marketing their product, evaluating the success of their business, and identifying a charity to which profits will be donated. During the fair, students set up booths to showcase their product, describe how it was made, and identify the price of their product. Mechanicsville Elementary School, uh, schools saw a large turnout for this event last year, and expect equal numbers this year. Ms. Audra Bishop, School Counselor at the James A. Forrest Technology Center, is increasing career awareness among elementary students by taking to the road with TAM students, these are our students from our Teacher Academy of Maryland program at the tech center. TAM students have been conducting lessons with fifth-grade students on how to identify careers that reflect their personality and interest. TAM students also explain how the tech center can support career exploration and prepare our students for future careers. Using students to reach students is yet another way that a career awareness is promoted among our younger grades, and the Forest Center is leading the way. Thank you, Mrs. Sayers, Ms. Hall, and Ms. Bishop, for representing all of our school counselors, for the amazing work that they do for our students and school community each and every day. In recognition of our school counselors and the important work that they do, I ask that Dr. Smith share the resolution.
First of all, thank you so much for joining us today, I know that there are many, 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 many things that await you back at the schools, so, the fact that you are here representing the work of all of the councils across St. Mary's County, thank you very much, you do so really, really well, and with that, whereas the week of February 5th through the 9th has been designated as National School Counseling Week in the school systems across, across our great nation, and, whereas, comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school, and, whereas, school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to their career awareness and development, and, whereas, school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and, whereas, school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and, whereas, school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes February 5th through the 9th, 2024, as School Counseling Week in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and, that all staff and students are encouraged to recognize this event and participate in its observance, signed by the board, and wow, so, thank you very much for all you do. Might we take a lovely picture? We will, we will move over a little bit, get up here. Try to do a, a side profile for Scott. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Boy, we're gonna be talking about your work tomorrow night, that's gonna be great.
We do not have a public hearing, is there any public comment? Alright, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Today's consent agenda, excuse me, uh, consists of the approval of minutes for January 31st, 2024, personnel teachers, uh, there are no administrative and supervisory appointments, so, with that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, alright, we have six action items today, the first one is Ms. Bachner with the Program of Studies. I'm crossing my fingers the technology works so I don't get written up again today.
That was, that was the, that was the, the lead on the story.
I know, all the wonderful presentation we had and dialogue, and I got written up about my technical difficulties, so, so far, so good.
Alright.
Dr. Marr is at the ready for me to help me.
Yes.
So, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Um, I am back with you, um, to share with you revisions to the Program of Studies and anticipation of approval of those, um, and, as we always, first reading was done on Jul-, uh, January, July, January 11th, um, and then we came for a public hearing on January 17th, it is to be noted, there were four public hearing responses, um, at that meeting, one of which was in support of the case pathway to reinstate that, and the other three were not actually in reference to the Program of Studies revisions that we made, one was asking for us to consider a K-312 Social Emotional Learning Curriculum, one was to look at a Required Financial Literacy, uh, uh, course, one was asked to look at a, um, reading support class for those that are not at grade level, all three of which, as I said, were not related to what was shared at the first reading, but we will certainly take that to the Department of Curriculum Instruction for review and consideration, just as we kind of develop our curriculum and supports for schools. Correct me if I'm wrong, there is a Personal Finance Class that is available through the Finance Academy at all three high schools. Absolutely. It's just not a graduation requirement. It is not, and actually, there's more than one financial literacy course, um, but it is not a required course, but our students all have the ability to take that course, there's also a Financial Mathematics course. Right. Available for a math credit. Okay. For students. Because we don't specifically require any courses for graduation outside of what the state recommends. Correct. Correct? At this time, yes. And then, today's the second reading. So, I am not going to do what I did last time, um, but I am just gonna do it in chunks, and so that if there are questions, um, you can, I will pause and ask if anybody has any questions, so, the new courses that were submitted, um, for your consideration are AP European History, AP African-American Studies, African-American Literature as both a half-credit and full-credit course, Independent Studying Career and Technology Education, Course Study Production and Review, pre-AP Spanish Seminar, which is a half of credit, so are there any questions on any of those courses? We also had new pathway, actually reinstated pathway, which was what was part of the co- comment, um, and supported by our community, um, for Comerica Yoma Agriculture Science Education, um, we also had, not really a new pathway, but a new pathway where that it would only need one class in those for, um, the EMT as well as fire rescue, there was a question by the board at the last meeting about if we could do an apprenticeship, um, or, um, within that, and I did have dialogue from Mr. Boyle to clarify that, um, they would have to be eighteen to be a full-time, um, and they run in twelve-hour shifts with an EMT, so that it would not allow them to be in school, um, as well as to do that, so I did get that, um, information from Mr. Boyle, that an AMP or apprenticeship, or internship with, as an EMT, is not available to students who are currently high school students. Um, and then we had course name changes, with then corresponded with description changes, uh, from TV Video Production 1 to Digital Media Production 1, and likewise, TV Video Production 2 to Digital Media Production 2, and then Radio Audio Production to Digital Pot Audio and Podcasting, any questions about the course name changes? And then the description clock changes for those courses, so, they were just all, um, you know, descriptions changed to meet the times and MSD requirements, so, all of those. We also did a revised study skills description, to just clarify that, it's for special education students only, and that's why we also reinstated or asked for approval of the study skills, or the study hall class, um, for those students who are not special ed. Then we had course updates, uh, AP Comparative Government and Politics, we've had it in place, um, for those students who are in GIS, but we, now we wanna make sure that it is available for all students, um, also making sure Educational Media Technology is available as a semester, and while as a full-credit or a full-year credit option, and then, Academy of Health Professions, we needed to revise that because of the NGSS standards, um, and making sure that we are not giving credit for something that doesn't meet those standards, but taking care definitely of the kids who are enrolled in that program right now, expecting that course. Um, and then AP Seminar was, we are now allowed by MSD to have students earn eleventh or twelfth grade English credit for that, so we wanted to bring that to your attention. Course Updates for Computer Science Principles, um, was another one, as well as the Dual Enrollment, um, Course Update, so I wanna pause on that one, 'cause I know if anybody has any questions on that, and that is, is that we are changing our, uh, our presentation of dual enrollment, that it will be on college campuses, um, and we will provide busing, but it will no longer be dual enrollment in our schoolhouses at this time, um, and it will be with students, we will be paying for students who are designated CCR, um, which we will be learning about, because that, again, changed on January 23rd by the state, they made different standards, um, for that, so hopefully, it will involve lots more kids, um, with the new revised standard, that's our hope, um, but we will have a MSD debrief on that for technical assistance on February 14th, so we won't know anymore, I can't share with you, the, you know, down and out of that, until we have that technical assistance meeting, so I didn't know if there's any questions on that slide. Core Completor Updates, um, is that we're going to two-year program with IT Network working.
Actually, can we go back to the, the dual enrollment?
Sure.
But the courses that are at the tech center, their dual enrollment, um, are going to still be available and, and still, is that correct?
The, the, if you have embedded dual credit for like the Academy of-
Health Sciences.
Health Sciences, we're not modifying those MOU.
My understanding is we definitely will need to look at the MOU, but I think that course already is just a test-only course, so that we're not paying, that's my understanding right now, Ms. Allen, is that we're not paying the full, we're paying for the test.
Each, each one of the tech center courses has their own individual agreed-upon memorandum of understanding with the College of Southern Maryland.
And most of them at this time articulated credits, not dual enrollment credits, so we need to look at that, too, is it better to have an articulated credit or dual enrollment given where we are right now, so we need to look at that also.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, we talked about IT Networking, the other updates are, just to make sure that Business Administration, CRD Pathways, and Computer Science Pathways, that we just go back and make sure that we kind of grandfather scoop up those students that may have not been freshmen when that Program of Studies started for them. We asked for deletions of AVPA 1 and STEM Research, they just haven't run, um, one of them since inception has never run, so, any questions on that? And then there were some questions, I did give you a communication update on this, on the prerequisite changes, um, so, Core Geometry and Geometry Honors, we're asking that there's no prerequisite for that, Accelerated Algebra II and Precalculus, we, our proposed prerequisite is that they have successful completion of Algebra I and Geometry, so, um, and I'm gonna go to the next slide, too, because I just kind of broke them up into two, made sure it was a little bit more clear than it was on the first reading, um, and the Precalculus Honors would also be successful completion of Algebra II, and I'm gonna pause at this point if there's any questions on that. Um, and then just some Academy Requirements Changes, um, changing from three credits to two credits of a rural language, absolutely allowing students in academies to take three, four credits, and, and those AP, uh, classes in rural language, but not requiring them as part of the, um, as part of the STEM distinction. Um, and then, also, looking at AVPA and allowing a little more flexibility in the schedule, because there are so few course offerings that are advanced placement for fine arts, there's a few, but not a lot. Any questions on any of the academies' changes? Um, and then we just go clarification of independent study, we just need to make sure that language, um, is very clear to those that are pursuing independent study, um, and at this point, I recommend that the Board of Action, Education, approve the, um, agenda items as presented. Any questions?
Nope.
Anyone?
Uh, just a comment, uh, you were mentioning about the new pathway for fire and rescue, uh, I'm, I'm, my information is somewhat dated, 'cause I've, I've been retired for quite a while, but, I recall that, uh, the, uh, the only curriculum in the whole country for fire engineering, um, and, uh, was at University of Maryland, I, I may be wrong, maybe there's more opportunities, but it is a wonderful program for students that might be interested in, uh, fire engineering, uh, uh, rescue, to, uh, look into the, uh, University of Maryland curriculum.
Yeah, it's quite an amazing facility, too, if you've never been there, it's quite something to see.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, anyone else? Alright, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the high school program of studies revisions for 2024, 2025 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion is carried. Thank you. Alright, now, we have Ms. Leono for the next forty-five minutes to an hour, it seems. First up is the Contract Awards for General Construction.
Got four items, so I have to make sure I'm in the right one.
Which is right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here, once again, I do this every three years, um, to come here to request approval for a job order contract for our general construction contractors, um, this time, we are requesting approval for Cheval Construction, Dennis Anderson Construction Corporation and Coal Roofing, uh, Company, authorizing the individual purchases up to two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars. Job Order Contract, I explain this every time, but it's also a good refresher of what a job order contract is, it's a, it's a mechanism that we use, public entities use, um, to have an indefinite quantity contract of different, um, aspects of what we could be using for a construction project, um, they, how we put it out, it's by trades, and we ask them to compare, to give us price per, um, by the, by, by the item of the trades that we're gonna hire them to, for example, if we're gonna do a demo of a relocatable, what, uh, we would, we would- what we, we, what we will be doing, including in the purchase order, labor, plumbing to disconnect the utilities, electrician to disconnect the utilities, all those trades that will come into a contract. And that's how we compare them one through the other. Job order contracts were created in the nineteen eighties, and, and it was really created in the military. It was a faster way to contract, and it was a much more functional for, than the traditional design bid build. How we use it, it's been used by all the LEAs. We've been using it quite for some years, and it's used through different, you know, from public, state government, from hospitals and schools. But it, it really helps us quickly contract the work that is needed if it's under two hundred thousand dollars. And what it gives you is an advantage because we already put that bid out and we already compared what's the best value. How we intended to use it, a lot of things. The Department of Maintenance uses, our department on Design and Construction use it also. We use it, a lot of our local CIP projects are smaller in quantity. We use it for, they're, they're, we ask for a one-year approval, but it's also renewal for the next two years. So if we think that the contractor is doing a good job of coming and responding to our requests, coming, because every time we ask them to respond, they have to come to the site, get a price proposal, and sometimes we've come into contractors that are far from here and for a job that is, I don't know, ten thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, it's not interesting for them, so they end up not coming. And those contractors, we will not renew for the next year. We also ask that they have the ability to respond within an hour because this will be a contractor that in case of emergency, they will come and help us get the work done. We use them for security vegetables, lighting upgrades, door hardware modifications. Our building mod process is done also, some of them through this job order contract. We've used them for office modifications or even smaller school modifications. We've used them for an ADA restroom modification. Anytime we need to do some ceiling modifications, routine repairs, and we've used them recently to renovate some relocatables or even demo relocatable that it's come into our need. How we procure this project, we put it out on RFP on November thirtieth. We were able to receive notifications for one thousand two hundred thirty-eight vendors, which is a big wide number of contractors. Out of those, twelve were interested, which is amazing to have to be so far here and have contractors that really want to work with us. It's an indicator that, you know, we're doing something good. Two of those unfortunately were unresponsive. We reviewed ten of those, and after a long analysis, we were able to pick on three top rank. Why three, three's a number that I've always liked to use. We don't have the volume to award to more than three. Some other jurisdictions will award five, ten. We don't have that volume, so I don't want to give hope to a contractor that they're never going to be asked to produce a PO. And the, how we evaluated, it was, it's a seventy percent based on technical, so we really put a, a big emphasis on their experience working with K to twelve. It's, it's very different, different to do construction for K to twelve than just a regular institution or a commercial institution. We asked them their experience with job order contracts and RS means, which is a way how they can calculate their price per hour. And then what other experiences they have with other clients that are K to twelve, and also we look at their financial information. And then a thirty percent is included in, in the price. Price is very important for us because we, we are trying to make our, our dollars extend. So we analyze each unit price per hour per trade. And then we also analyze what is their rent, material and equipment rental markup, and what is the percentage, percentage of the contract value for performance and labor material bonds. With that said, the top ranked number one firm is Shible Construction. They're in, our last job order contract just expired this past month, and they were one of our contractors. We use them quite often. Experienced in Southern Maryland, located in Southern Maryland, and they have experience with job order contracts, obviously, with us and other and Charles and. Dennis Anderson, they have been in our list too. They're ranked number two this year. They also were part of our current job order contract, and we use them quite often, very responsive. They come every time we need them, even for a simple alteration that we need urgently, he's here around. And then number three is a new firm as part of our job order contract, but that name is familiar with us because they've done roofing projects for us. I was surprised that they are interested in doing job order contract. Apparently they have a good self-performed tool that they can do the carpentry job, and, and, and they were interested, they, they, the experience that they have and how they can manage a project is what gave them more points in their evaluation. I am interested and see how a contractor that, the experience, the majority of experience if in roofing can help maintenance perhaps do more of their smaller projects too. And at this time, I re, my recommendation is that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented, and I am open for questions.
I have no questions, thanks.
Just a comment, thank you very much for explaining on these IDIQ advantages. There are disadvantages, of course, it's not necessarily get into, but one is, you know, everything being equal, time not being a consideration. It could be more expensive. I worked on the White House for a number of years, and there's nothing, no venue that's more appropriate for IDIQ than the White House. Number one, they're very limited contractors because of security and all, all the workers have to have security clearances. And so the traditional bid build is just too time-consuming. So IDIQ contracts were used almost exclusively, and everything was always an emergency, you know. You had to get a cooling system done, and as, as it were, you had, you had to respond to a very demanding client, which is the White House. So thank you very much for explaining the importance of these IDIQ contractors, contracts.
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
No questions, thank you.
I'll just point out, as I have in the past, that Dennis Anderson happens to be a second cousin, though about the only time I see him are at funerals, so I prefer not to see him.
In that venue.
In that venue. In that venue, but, but truly that is about the only time I see him. But I did want to make people aware that, you know, there is that sort of ceremonial, but at length, connection, so.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve multiple awards under SMCPS twenty twenty-four dash zero five dash DSS dash DC to Shible Construction, Dennis Anderson Construction Corporation and Coal Roofing Company with no individual purchase order to exceed two hundred thousand dollars without additional Board of Education approval as funding permits during the term of the contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay. Next up, we have the chiller replacement.
For three schools.
For three schools.
So yes.
You guys have been busy.
This, this, this project was really for, for chiller replacements, but we came earlier during last month to request the chiller replacement at Mechanics. And then why we did it separately, because that one, we already had it designed, and the chiller was not behaving very well at the beginning of the year, so we had a rush. We were able with the help of maintenance, keep it on track until we can replace it and order it. But since we had a design, we went ahead and, and put that one separate. They're, they're really four projects from the state anyway, but we have them lumped together. And that way, how we lumped it, we could do the pre-qualification together once for all four. And the request is to approve the three contracts in the award of six hundred eighty-three thousand to provide services, construction services, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, to W. L. Gary, Inc., for the chiller replacement of three schools. Benjamin Bannaker for two hundred fifty-six thousand. Lexington Park for two hundred twenty-nine thousand, and White Marsh for one hundred ninety-eight thousand. Again, this project is in our FY twenty-four capital improvement from the state and the local funds. These, all three units here are beyond the expectancy life. We don't like to extend a chiller more than twenty years because it's, obviously starts failing, and we see it, data shows us that. All of these three are above twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two years old, so we're right on track. The procurement method was a multi-step procurement where we put out technical qualifications, and we pre-qualify bidders, and then after that, we invite them to, to provide a price proposal, and that's how we award on the lowest bid. We advertised on September twentieth for all four chillers. Five hundred and eighty contractors received notification. Eight of those contractors submitted technical proposals on October fourth. Six of them were pre-qualified and invited to bid, and five of them submitted bid for this one. You recall on the chiller one at Mechanics, only three submitted, and this one, all five, oh, five out of six. Our selection for the lowest bid is W. L. Gary. Have done extensive experience with us. They did the green holly replacement of the HVAC, which was an undertaking project, but they are always working with maintenance to replace equipment. I've included each of them separately, again, because they are separate, they were separate bids, separate proposals. On the left, I've included all the financial information to make sure that, you know, we can afford this project. I do it with every project. The base bid is two hundred and fifty-six thousand, and we are asking a contingency of fifty thousand for each one of them. Lexington Park is two hundred nine, twenty-nine thousand, and we're asking again a contingency of fifty thousand. And White Marsh Chiller is a hundred ninety-eight, and we're asking the same fifty thousand dollars. My recommendation is that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented, and I am open for questions.
No questions again, thanks.
Only question on your bonding capacity. Do you have any mechanism to make sure that these contractors don't have, haven't exceeded the bonding capacity?
Yes, yes, we ask that in the pre-qualification process.
Because sometimes, you know, they may have many more dollars out in, in bids, in bids, and they may not know until after you awarded the bid that they got other contracts. Therefore, they would exceed their bonding capacity.
So part of our pre-qualification, they have to submit a letter from their surety, and then they have to disclose their financial information of how many projects they have out there, how many they are hoping to get awarded, and how many they have already contracted. So we, we look at that before we pre-qualify somebody.
That's all I have, thank you.
Nothing.
I'm trying not to sneeze, sorry.
Oh, good.
No questions.
No problem, good. You, great job. Very thorough.
No questions. Well done.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the three construction awards to W. L. Gary Company Incorporated in the amount of six hundred eighty-three thousand dollars and a construction contingency in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand dollars for the chiller replacement at three elementary schools. Benjamin Bannaker Elementary School in the amount of two hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. Lexington Park Elementary School in the amount of two hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars, and White Marsh Elementary in the amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Let's see, Classroom and Office, or Furnishings at Town Creek and White Marsh.
Yes. So I'm here again to request award to contracts for Durham, Inc. in the amount of three hundred ten thousand twenty-two dollars and sixteen cents for Town Creek Elementary School, and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred six dollars and ninety-four cents for White Marsh Elementary. For a total of four hundred nine thousand eight hundred twenty-nine and ten cents and fifty thousand dollars in contingency for, to provide furniture, deliver and install it in these two schools. FY twenty-four have fundings for these specific projects. We are hoping to start replacing the furniture even on spring and follow to summer, the beginning of summer. We have to, until June thirtieth to spend these line items here. We've already talked to the vendor about the possibility of starting as early as spring when close schools is closed, and they really are looking at that possibility because they are less busy during the school year than they are during the summer. So the existing conditions of Town Creek and White Marsh. White Marsh does has new, newer classroom setting just for desk and students' chairs, but they don't have new furniture for art, for media center. The office is really, they, they don't even have a conference table in the conference room. They have a little student table with student chairs. These are furniture that we haven't replaced in years. And rooms like a special ed or IRT rooms where they pull the groups out, they, they, their lack on replacement. Town Creek is a school that needs replacement incomplete. They have mismatched furniture. They have furniture that is falling apart, furniture that is not designed for this relearning of students, especially on, on this time, twenty twenty-four. And what we've introduced is the typical classroom furniture that it's more suitable for how we learn today. Desks that are easy to move and reconfigure. The chairs that had a little bit of wiggle room for the kids that need to move. Soft seating for a alternative way of learning introduced in the classroom. The teacher's desk that includes the famous cookie table that the teachers are having good reviews. They use it different ways. They can put it to the, next to the desk, and they, it can be used as a extension of their desk for parent-teacher conferencing, but it also goes up and down so they can use it as a podium, lecture on the front of the classroom. Art, room tables, kindergarten tables, everything. It's, it's inspiring. We will be using the furniture vendor, Durham, which is a furniture vendor that we have been using for the last four other furniture replacements. They include discounts from forty-one point three percent to fifty-six, depending on the vendors that we pick. They're usually fast in production. It's between six to eight weeks by the time we release them. And they have warranty, it's one year in everything, but they have individual warranties on other things that are extended than that. And the cost of the proposal includes the delivery and the installation of them. The contract that we are using, it's the Mid-Atlantic Purchasing Team. It was issued by Howard County, Maryland, and includes- Um, it was issued by Howard County, Maryland and includes office, schools and library. Um, the period, it's up until December thirty-first, but they have one more year of renewal. At this moment, um, my recommendation is that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
As usual, this looks wonderful, so I have no questions.
No questions.
No questions.
None. All right, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract awards to Duron Incorporated in the amounts of three hundred ten thousand twenty-two dollars and sixteen cents for Town Creek Elementary School and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred six dollars and ninety-four cents for White Marsh Elementary School totaling four hundred nine thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and ten cents and fifty thousand dollars contingency to provide, provide, deliver and install classroom and administrative office furnishings.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. And finally, the uh
Great Mills Roof.
The Great Mills Roof.
Yeah, so you all recall that I couple of weeks ago, last week, three weeks, no, it has to be.
Don't talk in the last month.
I came to request a reject of the bids because we only had one bidder and that bidder was above the budget that we had. Um, I'm happy here now to come for a request of approval, so. The request is to approve seven million two hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and six hundred thirty-five thousand for construction contingency to Coal Roofing Company for the replacement of Great Mills Phase Two. Um, i- in this aerial picture, you can see on the left looks white and the right looks black. The left is what we replaced on twenty twenty. It looks white because it's new, it's new um roofing. And and you can see that we, the, the black portion needs replacement. Um, this is a twenty-six-year-old roof that um it's taking, so we put it in our C I P. We are hoping to do the work in three summers. Um, when we did the left, which was less, we did it in one summer. It was during COVID. Schools were closed and we were able to extend the construction during the school because nobody was in the buildings. Uh, we can't do that on the right side, it's bigger. Um, and then I have a smaller window of opportunity to do this. This, this is a project that cannot be done while occupied. Um, so we have extended it into three summers. Um, and then um we requested the service of a prime contractor. Um, the drawing that has all the letters, those are the areas that we will be touching. Um, we were able with this bid not only to come under budget, but we were also able to pick on alternates which are also something that we do. We, when we don't have enough budget, we put things on alternate to at least do the minimum of the project, the base, what we really need to do. But then the alternates are things that also need to be replaced, but we can put them on a, at a later time. Um, what uh, the first alternate that we did is a four ply instead of a three ply. Our base of design was a three ply. The left side of the school was a four ply. So it makes sense to keep the same type of fur- uh roofing for the whole school. Uh, St. Mary's County Public Schools and Maintenance and Designer Construction really like the, the idea of four ply because it gives more, extends the time of the roof. And the repairs are, are not as needed when you have one ply. So what it means is the, the layers of furniture or roofing material, no? And, you know, if you walk on it, if you go and do maintenance of an equipment or you're gonna do a cleaning or a, or of a roof drain, it can be perforated if it's one ply. But if it's four ply, it's gonna last longer. Um, we were able to pick uh the barrels on sections S, D, U and V, which are at the entry of two entries of Great Mills. The metal roof that goes on both sides. And then the skylights that go over uh sections L and N. Just to give you an idea, another co- projects we have not been able to pick on skylights. We want to do them because they also need replacement. But it's, at least we, we put them as an alternate because if we have money just for roof, we will do just the roof. Um, multi-proc- uh, multi-step procurement, again, we put out um technical qualifications and we look at their financials, we look at their expertise and how are they legally standing. Um, we approve them to pre- pre-qualify them and then we invite them to participate on a paid proposal. And we award on the lowest bid. Uh, we advertised this RFP on October thirty-first on E Maryland Marketplace. Two hundred and seventy-four contractors received notification. Eight of those submitted technical proposals on November seventh. Three firms were pre-qualified and invited to bid on November fifteen. On December first, uh, we submitted, we re- received one single bid. And on December thirteenth is when I came here to re- ask you to reject the single bid and reuse you and revise the invitation to bid. And two firms this time submitted bids um uh on January thirty-first. Um, things that we changed too, because Comar lets us rebid, uh, but you have to change something, no? Um, so what we ask is we extended the time from two summers to three summers. Now, if they have capability to do it in two, they're welcome to do it in two. But at least they have up to three that sometimes is, it's appealing because contractors, you know, have their labor going to some places and if they can work better at their schedule, they're all gonna give us better price. Uh, and the other change that we did is we removed the re- the chiller that is currently sitting on the roof. It has to be go- uh, up lifted so that the flashing and the curves can be built around the roofing. Um, we removed that from their scope and we will be doing that with another local project. Um. The s- for select, the, our selection, our recommendation for selection is Coal Roofing, which is the same contractor that did the left side. So naturally, it's gonna be one uh way of building it. Um, they have experience with several jurisdictions and uh we were very satisfied the way how they did the work for us. It was the first time they did a roof for us, very knowledgeable contractor. Uh, proposed phase is a base bid of six million three hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred ninety. And then the three alternates that I already commented, the four ply is one. The alternate number two is to do the bi- the metal roof barrels on top of those sections and then the skylights. Um, and we are asking eight percent in contingency. It's, it's, I, the minimum I like to ask is six percent in contingency, especially on a roof that you don't know how you, what are you gonna find once you start demoing what the condition is underneath. Um, I've included the financial summary um to see that we even end up a little bit of balance in this um project. And at this time, my recommendation is that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented and I am open for questions.
I have no questions, but thank you for all that you do.
Um, the technology that you're proposing is about probably a hundred and fifty years old. And uh, I made comments several years ago that I'd prefer the three or four ply um membrane roof hotbed uh over, you know, a, a uh single ply uh Elastomeric. And one of the reasons is that, like you mentioned, if you get penetrate uh a single membrane, sometimes it's almost impossible to find the leak. Uh, where it's much more uh easily to repair uh using the uh the multi-asphalt membrane roof. So uh k- kudos to you for going to the old technology, which I think is still.
Yeah, n- n- we have a, a big push from the state to want us to go to one ply and you know, we are the ones who are maintaining and we are, as long as we can do four ply, we're gonna do the minimum is three. Um, that's something that we believe.
Yeah, there, there's buildings that were built during the Civil War using uh that same technology and they're, they're still, it's still functional. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
I want to thank you for your presentations. And it seem like it's a pattern. They're easy to read, easy to follow and easy to understand. They're colorful, they're concise and they're clear. And you put us at the scene of what's going on. We have the image right there. It's like we're right at the location. So thank you very much and I like the way you use the spacing and, and your font and your entire presentation is excellent.
Thank you.
Um, I certainly I echo everything that um Mrs. Washington just said. Um, my only question is um, uh, given that, um, this is the, the second time or second yeah, the, the other portion of the roof will, though it's going to take place potentially over three summers, will this then complete the project for the roof at Great Mills High School?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, great, thanks.
Great, anything else? I appreciate your diligence in, in reissuing.
And creatively spreading it out, actually listening to the people who are bidding and finding ways to get them to be able to successfully bid, that's very good. Great, thank you.
It, it's always nerve-wracking to know what is gonna happen on a bid day. Um, this time, I'm happy to come with a positive outcome.
All right, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the request to award a contract in the amount of seven million two hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred ninety dollars to provide construction services and six hundred thirty-five thousand for a construction contingency to Coal Roofing Company for the partial roof replacement Phase Two at Great Mills High School.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we have Dr. Mar with the school calendars for the next two school years.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So, um, I'm back for the second reading and for your action on the school year calendars for the twenty-two and twenty-five school year. I've got a rather brief presentation because there were very few modifications since what we presented to you um in uh January. So first, a reminder that the calendar is developed um in a, a- as a result of a collaborative work group including parents, guardians, students, members of the education associations and um staff across the, the ranks. And then, of course, we present it to you for action. We um held a survey in November, there were about four thousand responses. I shared those responses with you last time. The calendar committee met in the fall as well and we've presented to you in January as well as having a public hearing. There were no speakers at the public hearing and no other comments that were received following it. Um, I do have a couple of modifications that we, just small modifications based on the guidance we got from M S D E and I'll cover that in just a few minutes too. A reminder about the parameters, a hundred and eighty days is the target that we absolutely have to hit um for our students and then, of course, the, the additional days for staff that are there as well. And then, of course, the required holidays that I've shared with you in the past, they're built into the calendar as well. And, of course, the um, in addition to those mandatory days in the, in statute, we also have days that we have historically uh looked at and those are included in the calendar as well. Now, um, this is again the follow-up that part of the reason we look at our vert- our, our makeup days and the additional days in the calendar is so that when we do have, uh, not a year like this perhaps or the last couple of years, but if we were to exceed the number of built-in um s- uh, snow days or inclement weather days, there are options that, uh, if we've used all of those uh days that we can request a waiver. We've only had to do it a couple of times, but those, uh, having those days built in and that's why the calendar is built on a hundred and eighty-three days and um the other makeup days that we add in there. Um, Dr. Smith mentioned the President's Day earlier, um, that's coming up that we haven't had to use, but it's, it provides those extra times. Now, the last time I presented to you, I shared the information in Senate Bill six-ten that was um passed in the last General Assembly session and that allowed for the use of virtual instruction days for inclement weather days. And we specifically looked at that because we wanted to look at to see if those makeup days, i.e. the President's Day and the day after Easter, if those could be used as virtual makeup days. Um, based on the guidance and the presentation that was made to the State Board last month um by M S D E staff, uh, these are some excerpts from that guidance and clearly it says that, that they can only be used if you're closing school for inclement weather, that that day specifically can be used as a virtual day. But we can't have a makeup day used as virtual instruction. So those two days that were part of that uh presentation, we had those options looked at in, in the calendar. We had to strike that from this version of the, of the calendar that, that you're uh voting on now. Um, and just the other key dates, because this is what, uh, obviously the families want to know is when do I have to have students back in school? And so those dates are listed there uh for, for our students as well as for our, for the Chesapeake Public Charter School. And those calendars, as soon as you take action, we will be publishing those calendars um on the, uh, on the website uh for, for everyone um before the end of the week, okay? Um, one additional minor change uh that was made is uh for consistency's sake, the uh report card release date that was originally published in the draft in January, we had to move it one day so that was the same number of days for each quarter when the report cards are published. And I know that's, that's printed on the, on the calendar as well. So, uh, we now um present this for your consideration and ask that you approve the calendars for the next two school years.
I have no questions.
No questions.
No, good job, Dr. Mar.
The only thing I'd like to emphasize is once again, each one of these calendars has a substantial winter break and retains spring break as well because we have heard loud and clear from parents, students and staff that that is an integral element of the St. Mary's County calendar.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I move, excuse me, I move that the Board approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six St. Mary's County Public School operational calendars and the Chesapeake Public Charter School as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
All right, student attendance, we have Ms. Long and Ms. Weaver.
Isn't he just the best?
See, I know, do you see that, I was like, hmm, Dr. Mar will certainly pull my presentation. We are here to talk about attendance, we love talking about attendance. Attendance, so important, so important for our students. Okay. Um, so Ms. Weaver has joined me this morning to talk about attendance interventions. And we are gonna jump right in because the most important thing that we're thinking about um as we think about attendance in our schools are those students that fall under the chronic absenteeism uh percentage right there. And those are the students that are absent ten percent or more of school days. And important to note, that is excused and unexcused absences, absences as well. So both of those are taken into consideration. And I also provided the um definition for an absent student, a student who is not physically on school grounds or is not participating in instruction um or instruction-related activities um at an approved off-ground location of the school day, just so there's no um question there on what an absent student looks like.
And I would just like to emphasize, this is not a St. Mary's County designation. This is the Maryland State Department of Education's definition of what is chronically absent. It regardless, regardless of what the reason may be, if you miss ten percent of the accumulated days, you are considered a chronically absent student. And that means that if you are present ninety, eighty-nine point nine percent of the time, you're still considered chronically absent with the same, with the way M S D E calculates this number. This number drives all of the school reporting, school report cards. It is definitely um something that we are all vigilantly focused on.
Yeah, and just two, you know, when you think about a month of school, really just two school days for kids, right?
In a month, you are chronically absent for that month.
And it's a full day, is that correct?
Full day.
Like, so like this would click in for a full day, not a partial day?
Full day.
Okay, just making.
But half-days add up.
Half-days add up.
Four periods and more.
Four periods and more.
Yeah.
Goes toward the overall bottom count.
That's true. So, um, with that being said, we know it's important to keep kids connected, keep them connected, keep uh students and our families engaged. And so schools do that through their, it's, it's the framework they have through their M T S S multi-tiered system of supports. And we've talked about that um before, when we look at discipline and our supporting. And we've talked about that before, when we look at discipline and our supporting our social, emotional learning, our interventions and supports there. But we also are going to talk about it today when we look at our tiers of intervention for attendance, because that is definitely a big part of what those school teams look at as well. They're looking at school-wide data, and that data that they use from those MTSS meetings drive their interventions and their action plans. So, what does that look like in our tiered approach? You're familiar with Tier One, universal prevention, really for all students. So, we're gonna, I'm gonna just, right now, talk to you about what that triangle looks like, and then we're gonna dive into each tier to give you specific information on each one. So, Tier One is universal, all students and all families, because not only, you know, when we talk about interventions, whether it be attendance today, we're talking about attendance, but other interventions, we're always looking at the family, too, not just the student themselves. So, Tier Two intervention, those are students that we just talked about, missing that ten percent, right? Two days, just two days per month. We're jumping on it right away in those school teams. And they are considered for Tier Two intervention. And then, even greater than that are students that are missing twenty percent or more, and that's Tier Three intervention. Okay, so specifically for Tier One, I think we hear a lot about Tier One. And probably, if you're visiting in the schools, you'll see, you'll see that in our school buildings. And I'm going to show you a couple of pictures just to show you what that looks like. But that's creating a positive school climate overall. All the work that they do for that, the parent-family engagement activities, you see posters hanging in the buildings. They have different incentives, attend dance. If people are attending school, they get tickets to go to a dance, you know, for good attendance. Robo-calls go out at the end of the day, at night, for students that have been absent as a reminder to parents that your student was not in school today, if they maybe did not know that, or a reminder for follow-up. And, of course, monitoring attendance data, as I suggested, not only through the MTSS meetings, but our counselors are doing that regularly, our nurses, our, all of our Student Services staff, and our teachers, too. Or, you know, when they see students that are absent one day, two days in a row, that's when they're checking in. So, what does it look like in our schools for Tier One? And here are just some pictures that I want to share. Principals are working at it. They are working hard at it. And any incentives that they can come up with, they're sharing different incentives. You see these bulletin boards through the hallways. There's nothing better than a competition, right, between students, and this definitely spurs that. So, here's a couple bulletin boards that we see. Positively sweet on middle school as well, middle school, they're never too old to do competitions and incentives for students. So, these are some of the things that we see as we walk through our buildings. And I did see one for staff, too, actually, so.
President Tuck in particular, certainly Principal Kent was talking about.
Yeah.
How exceptional his staff is with their attendance rate. It's just unbelievable.
Yeah, and it's good. I mean, we want our staff to be role models, right? So, it's important that students see that we, you know, we are working on it as well. And then, the principals' communications and their smores. In their smores, we, you know, we're hoping parents and our, you know, our families are reading those. There's always information on the importance of attendance. And I know it's hard to see on this, but on the right-hand side, just shout-outs to teachers, because, you know, they bring, you see the bulletin boards that are happening in the school, and then right down to the classroom, some of the principals' in their smores are giving shout-outs to those teachers in those classes that are meeting that bar. So, good to see.
All right, now we're going to move into Tier Two, which is early intervention. And, of course, as Cheryl had mentioned before, this really does start early. These are students who are absent for ten percent or more school days, which is about two days a month. So, we start with counseling and lunch bunches. So, it is a great way for counselors and school psychologists and PPWs to meet with these students. And they talk about problem-solving skills, they talk about coping mechanisms to engage them to be able to come to school. We offer attendance meetings. This is where we get the parents involved. It is so important for the parents in the school to have a partnership, to come together, because, of course, good attendance starts at home. They have to be in school in order for us to put all of these interventions into place. Those attendance meetings are monthly, they are structured, and they are data-focused and data-driven. The next is to remove attendance barriers. Attendance is just a symptom of usually a bigger issue. So, there's so many, there could be transportation, health concerns, housing, food insecurities. So, there's anxiety, mental health. So, there's a lot of barriers that we would like to try to remove and eliminate those hardships so those students do come to school. And that's what we talk about during those attendance meetings. We do the check-in and check-out program. This is a great mentoring program. This is where a student comes into school, they check in with a teacher that they connect with. Before they leave, they check out with them. So, and they can go through anything that's, you know, during the day, if they're having a problem at school, their behavior, academics, attendance. It's a way to connect, again, with those students. And then, home visits. A lot of PPWs, we go out to the homes. We evaluate the home environment. What do they need? And that's when we can include those community partners to come in and connect them. We look at their strengths, their weaknesses, and provide resources and help them in any way that we can. So, we wanted to take a deeper dive into the monthly attendance meetings. So, the participants, of course, is the school administrator, there's a counselor, school psych, PPW, nurse, classroom teacher, and a parent. They're all invited. We look at relative, relevant, excuse me, medical concerns. We have programs like home-hospital teaching and CHIPS that we can provide for students if they are struggling to come to school because of a health concern, and that could be a mental health concern or a physical condition. We also look at attendance, discipline, academic data. We review previous interventions and strategies. If those aren't working, we need to come up with something different, something that is going to work. We make a lot of parental contacts through phone messages, text messages. We are using the Talking Points app, which is fabulous, to connect to families who don't speak English. It translates our text messages to over a hundred and fifty languages, which is amazing. So, we connect with all of our parents, we send out letters, emails, and, of course, we invite them to these attendance meetings. We develop attendance support plans. These are specific interventions, they're action plans, and a way to reward students for coming to school. And then, we also schedule follow-up meetings. All right, and this is what it looks like at these attendance meetings. We make sure that the parents get the attendance brochure. This is, it shows exactly the effect of what absences has on their school progress. And then, we also, another popular brochure that we give them is, when is too sick to come to school? I mean, especially after COVID, it's really important to educate parents to know that there is a nurse in every building, that they're there full-time. So, you know, unless your child has a fever or is, you know, another illness, that they can always come to the school nurse and to make sure that they're, you know, it's good for them to be in school. Then we're going to move on to Tier Three, which is the more intensive intervention. So, this looks at students that have the need for wraparound services and families that have the need for that. And I'm going to go into a little bit more detail as we talk about our interagency committee. But it really does look at their lack of basic needs, housing instability, if there's any illness, anxiety. We need to find that out so we can make sure that we connect with our community partners to ensure that they get to school. We create and sign attendance intervention plans and monitor their progress. And then, we do refer them to our interagency committee on school attendance if needed. And we're going to take a deeper dive into what that is. We connect with these community partners, but these partners are also a part of our team. We have a great interagency team. We have the Assistant State's Attorney. He talks about the truancy law to parents. He attends virtually. We have our Department of Social Services. They provide any help from financial to emergency assistance to counseling services. We have a representative from the Health Department. She explains services that they provide, physical, mental health. Any health center, we have two health centers, and then our health hub on Great Mills Road. DJS, they assist families with any students that are involved in the court system. We have the Southern Maryland Community Network. She can provide counseling at virtually, in person, or she'll even come out to your home and do in-home services. So, that's another positive agency that we have in our committee. We have our court liaison, PPW, who's Elizabeth Wood. She is the connection between the school system, DJS, and the State's Attorney's Office. And then, of course, we have a school administrator that attends. I do chair those meetings. They happen on the first week of, first Monday of every month. And we hold them from, they start in October and they run through April, because we have to, you know, make sure that the students have kind of their foot in the door. So, those meetings do start in October. And I just wanted to give you an example of a success story from one of our interagency meetings that we had in December. So, I'm going to just give you an example, and it's brief. We had a student, an elementary school student, who had missed thirty-three days in December. The school had exhausted every possibility of helping this mom. The mom was then not responding, so we sent her a letter for interagency. The mom came to the board office, and she reported that the child would not ride the bus. And when he misses the bus, she didn't have reliable transportation to get him there. Then she started talking that he was having problems in the cafeteria. It was the noise level that, on the bus and in the cafeteria, that he could not endure. So, we offered noise counseling headphones. She was so excited about that. The school had already had them, so we gave them to her. The next thing that we had talked about that he was struggling with was asthma. He was missing a lot of days because, due to the weather changes and some of upper respiratory infection that he had. So, the Health Department coordinator, she stepped right in, and she said, we have an asthma program. We are going to make sure that we come to your home, we evaluate your home, we're going to figure this out. And we also offered her CHIPS, the CHIPS paperwork, the chronically health-impaired paperwork. So, if he was out of school, a teacher, we could provide support for him and his make-up work. So, that was great. We also learned that he loved to play video games. So, that was his incentive. So, every Friday, if he came to school for the whole week, he would have extra time to work on, with his computer. And that was an incentive, and he loved that. And we also learned, too, that he had such a great connection with his tutor, his teacher from last year. He didn't really get to form a connection with his teacher from this year because he had missed so many days. So, we enrolled him in the check-in, check-out program. And, of course, who was that mentor, his teacher from last year? I am very happy to report, he has only missed two days since December, and that was due to COVID. So, that was, that was fine, and he is not, they were not invited back to our next interagency meeting, but we still follow up with that mother to make sure that she has everything in place to move forward. So, we're really proud of him. So, there's a lot of support and incentives for him.
Before we move off that, that's an illustrative example of the work that the school system does with community partners. So, when people say, well, what are you doing about it? Please understand that we are doing everything we can. And that is a success story because, following through the process, we had positive parental engagement. There is very little that we can't solve if we have positive parental engagement. Thank you for that story. That's a great story.
Sure. All right. Next, we are going to look at the attendance playbook. So, the PPWs saw the need for, especially over COVID, to put together a hands-on, practical playbook for students, staff, and families. They worked hard over the course of two to three years, and below are the topics that are in the playbook. We talk about family education, there's attendance brochures, family success plans in there, health brochures, information about the CHIPS program. There's elementary attendance and secondary attendance procedures. It goes down and it looks at exactly what you should do, what a school team should do at two days, what a school team should do at five days. So, it's just, and it's a task list, and it just makes it very easy. We give them sample attendance letters. They can, principals can take those, and they can pick up their, the language from those sample letters and put it into their own words and put it on their own letterhead. It's all right there for them. And the last thing is our student refusal assessment. This is what gets to the root cause of why they're not coming to school. We have used this with not only children, so there's an assessment for the children. There's an assessment for the parent, and then we look at the root cause and look at treatment options for why they're not coming to school.
And the last slide brings us back to.
Sam.
Our Sam, our attendance dog, and just, we need our parents to hear us and hopefully hear that we are here to work with them. You know, we, we want to break down those barriers. We want to be able to support you and connect those wraparound services. So, please reach out to your school counselor, your, somebody in your school, a school staff member, and that's where, that's where it'll start.
You answered all my questions in the presentation, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jim?
No, no questions.
Mary, I know you have a couple comments.
That was a beautiful presentation, and I love the example of the success story. That makes it clear for me and board members to understand the magnitude of work that you do. And I want to thank you for that. And, you know, as often said, it takes a village to raise a child, it takes a village to educate a child, because you have many community partners to make, to make it work. Got a lot of comments here. Anyway, it's really good what you're doing, and I see that you work very hard, but the key is to get the parents involved. Because it's not just a St. Mary's County issue, it is a nationwide issue of chronic student absenteeism. Also, do you see any trends with absenteeism, chronic absenteeism?
We definitely see trends. It's our farms population mostly. We see the lower percentage, probably about, it's... So, the first big trend we see is, as students age from elementary to middle to high school, you know, the attendance, they struggle. As they get older, they're struggling with their attendance. So, certainly, a lot of our work, as Ms. Weaver talked about, elementary school. But, you know, it's a little bit tougher in the secondary schools, you know, when, you know, those students start struggling. For our elementary schools, across the board, it's our farms population and what Ms. Weaver had talked about, the things that they struggle with, you know, the homelessness, food insecurities, and all of that, you know, at every level, we see that. Specifically for middle school, when we look at the data, they are, our farms population is attending at a two percent rate lower than our other populations of the school. And then, when we move into high school, we see a three to four percent decrease in our farms population. So, that's, that's definitely our work. I mean, we really lean heavy into our community partners, you know, for those barriers that...
And when you set a standard at ninety percent, ten percent absent, that's one way to present it, great. But ninety percent, ninety percent is the cutoff between being chronically absent and not chronically absent. Two to three percent from one group to another, just based on, you know, the economic forecast and economic elements of your home, that makes a lot of difference.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that you have shared just how extensive and comprehensive your approach is to all of this. I think that for most of our, most of our community, they're not aware of all that's being done. It always does seem like you hear, we're not doing enough. I'm not sure what more you could accomplish with this. I also don't believe that probably our greater community understands that our rate of poverty here, as wealthy as this county is, is around thirty-nine, forty percent of the population. So, when you are looking at that population in poverty, being the one who struggles so much, even with just getting to school on a consistent basis, that's a pretty significant number of students. So, thank you for all the work that you're doing with our community partners to do your best to make sure that our families have what they need to be successful, to be in school. And I know that our teachers are certainly following through with those important staff-student relationships so that students understand that teachers care about them, their principals care about them.
And they want them there every single day.
And they, you know, so, very much appreciated that you've, that you've laid this all out for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think, I think you made great strides. Going back ten years ago, you know, my daughter was not in school for a health reason, and I got one of those letters, and I'm like, you've got to be kidding me, because everyone in the elementary school knew what we were going through, but yet, then I get this letter, and I'm like, you've got to be kidding me. Everything that we were dealing with, and then to get that on top of it, I'm like, I was pretty much done. So, I do appreciate the fact. So I do appreciate the fact that it seems like there is more interaction now between the school and your office on, you know, on issues like that. I know you still have to send the letter, but.
It shouldn't come as the very first thing you ever see.
No, it should not. And, and, and it was at that time. But that was, as I said, that was, you know.
And then she ran for the board, got elected to the board, and has served on the board for a decade, almost a decade. Not bad.
So.
Words to actions, love it.
It's not as odd to, to run, but yes. I can relate, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I do appreciate all the work that you guys do, because it is, it is very daunting, I'm sure, to those parents when they, you know, so.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. McCourt.
And really, when you think about it, so I was just thinking about my visit to Lexington Park Elementary School and those bright, shining fifth-grade bases as they were eating their walking tacos. Come on, if they weren't there, they wouldn't be part of all of that wonderment and the house team and the education that's going on, and tacos.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have before you the January month-end report of the, on the revenue side of the $284.9 million budget, we have received $203.3 million with a balance of $81.5 million. Or 71.39% of the budget has been received. A particular note on the revenue side is the interest income that's coming in substantially higher, which is nice.
Oh, wait a second. So that, that implies that the stock market's doing well, people are making revenue, more money is coming into people's pockets. I think it's important to recognize that the economy seems to be recovering. Okay, sorry.
Of course, that's just paper, paper profits, right, until it's cashed in.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, oh, absolutely. But the, the more your paper wealth, the better loan you're able to secure. With the lowest interest rate, you're able to access a whole bunch of other things.
And on the expenditure side.
Right.
The accommodations, $129.9 million in accommodations and expenditures, $266.2 million, available balance of $18.6, and there are no categorical concerns at this time. Are there any questions? Anyone have anything? Any additional comments?
No, just that that's music to my ears, that there are no categorical concerns at this time. We are all expensing exactly as anticipated.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, our next board meeting will be on Wednesday, February 21st. Executive session begins at 5:00, and the open meeting begins at 6:00. On that, we are adjourned.